Recall the special meeting to order. Madam Plutch, please call the floor.
Trustee Bell?
Here.
Trustee Brewer?
Here.
Trustee Breen?
Here.
Trustee Todd?
Here.
Trustee Williams?
Here.
Okay, before we get started, I just wanted to say... Just wanted to have something to say. And I know it's probably there in front of the room, but I did send out termination letters, notice, because I knew that this village wanted to go in a different direction with our legal services. I would like to work with the board, but to do so, I need a law firm that I have confidence in, who will impartially advise this entire board. I do not want to keep working under this previous broken system. If the board wants to overturn the removal and then replace them with a new firm at a regular meeting, that's fine. I'm not here to argue, I'm not here to go back and forth. I'm just here to state a fact. Hopefully, we can work something out, hopefully that we can come together, because this is what it's all about. It's...I'm hoping that people are not just here just for the money, hoping people are not here just for their own edification. I know when I got elected, I said I would work for the people, and I believe that these trustees got elected for the same reason, not for different agendas. That being said, second item is a motion to restore the law firm of Olson and Stirk as the village attorney effective immediately.
So, second?
It was moved by trustee Will, second by trustee Brewer. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, at this time, I'd like to ask, when you first terminated Olson and Stirk on Friday, you terminated them by letter, but you did not let the board know about it. Olson and Stirk had to inform us of it. Your failure to inform the village board is kind of like, where's the transparency? You also failed to cite the proper municipal code section, and we don't know who's been advising you, but when you fired the firm, you were supposed to give the reasons at that time, and now you're stating them publicly. So, you were supposed to give reasons for why you took that action, and you have to give the village attorneys a chance to respond pursuant to state statute. So, Mr. Mayor, at this time, please advise the board, what you just did, in short form, why you wanted to terminate Olson and Stirk as the village attorney. And I ask that they have a chance, as the law states, to respond at this time.
And who has a chance to respond?
That the law firm has a chance to respond.
First of all, I know you just didn't say about transparency, about...
Yes, I did.
...what no. And you, first thing, you came in on May 21st, is to give me this, I think it was 13 different motions and four different ordinances and one resolution that I had nothing, knew nothing about them. I asked this board at that time, at that meeting, did they know anything about it? And the board said, "No." No, I'm sorry, the board didn't say, "No." The board didn't say anything. I asked the attorney, after about six times I asked the board, they didn't know anything about it. And they said, "Well, we had a meeting." And that meeting took place on the first of May, second of May.
On the order, Mr. Mayor?
Excuse me?
There's a first and a second, a motion and a second on the floor.
She asked a question. You don't want me to answer her question? Or we want to just move on and just do it like we're trying to do now? Trustee asked a question. I'm sure she had it for a reason. She asked me to explain? So, now, you don't want me to explain?
No, don't continue.
Do you don't want me to answer?
No, actually, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. What I said was, you've already answered my question when you opened up the meeting. What I want to do now is to give the attorneys a chance to respond.
Okay, and you know, you asked me, you asked me, "Why did I get rid of the attorney?"
You just said that when you opened up the meeting.
No, I didn't finish, "Why I got rid of the attorney." No, ma'am. I didn't say that.
I thought I understood you to say that you wanted attorneys that worked with the whole board.
I did not say, "Why I got rid of the attorney." No. And you said, "I didn't inform the board."
In the way in a different direction.
No, I did not inform the board at the time that I fired the attorneys. No, ma'am, no, I did not. But now, you can ask questions, but you don't want to hear the answers. No, I did not, because I never told you why. I told you what transpired that made me come to that conclusion. I did not, you did not tell me or ask me why I did. I will continue to what I just stated.
There's a motion on the floor?
We still need to hear the attorneys' response to that.
Okay, which one do you want? You want to do the motion, or do you want to...
I want to hear what the attorneys have to say.
Thank you.
So, you don't want to ask?
You weren't being transparent with the board.
No, you guys were not being transparent with me. You were not being transparent with me when you did what you did on the 21st. You were not being transparent, but now, you don't want to hear my side, you just want to go ahead. So, this is what I'm talking about. This is exactly what I'm talking about. We can give the trust, I mean, the lawyers a chance, but you don't want to give me a chance to say what I have to say? So, that's, so that's fine. That's fine, because, boy, that's fine with everybody out there.
(inaudible)
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 Okay, okay.
What I'll do is this, I'll...
Just trying to get them folks to be quiet.
I'll finish what I have to say. And then, if you want the lawyers to speak, I have no problem with that. But I will explain why I did what I did, and why I didn't, I didn't feel that I needed to. The reason why I did what I did is because there were motions, ordinances, and resolutions that were penned, talked about, and never discussed with myself. I didn't get a letter, I didn't get a phone call, an email, a time-time, I didn't get anything that this meeting transpired, until I got a letter in my mailbox, and it was the actual agenda and what happened. But before that, preparing that, did anyone come and say, even the lawyers? That's the part that hurt the most, because I've known this law firm since I, since, I think it was 2011 when they came onboard here at the village. And I've dealt with this law firm for that length of time. And yes, I talked to the law firm's chief partner today and told him the same thing, that I was really disappointed, that I couldn't even...I'm not, I'm not faulting this board for not doing that. I'm faulting the lawyers for not informing me that we're paying. We're paying the law bills. I went to them when I first started and became mayor and said, "I cannot afford to pay this kind of money each and every month." Each and every year, I went to them and told them, "We paid a four, five, four, five hundred thousand dollars in law bills." And they said, "Okay, Mr. Burgess, Mayor, we understand." I said, "I have to cut back." And I did cut back. And I have the invoices here, and I'm going to pass them out. I thought we were going to talk about this later, but, uh, fine. With all those things, it took a while for me to digest that. But what the icing on the cake was, I was not informed, as if I didn't exist as the CEO of this village, to have the courtesy to say, "This is what's transpired." I didn't blame the board, because I knew what they were trying to do, whatever it may be. So, that's, in that instance, that's why I said, "I cannot put trust in someone that has, this village supposedly has this village that hard, and all you have are certain people, not the whole village." Had you told me, at least I could have a chance, "Let's sit down." As I stated before, I asked, it was never said, "Mayor, what's going on? What do you have in the queue? What's transpiring? What is it that we're doing?" No, the meeting started out with motion to do such and such. Let's change this, change that, let's do this, and let's do that. Nothing said, "Let's, can we have a meeting and bring someone?" Now, somebody wants to say after the fact? But was it ever talked about or talked about at the time? No, it was not. It was not even brought up. But somehow or another, that's okay, and that's transparency. Really. So, me saying that I fired the lawyers because it's not transparent, no, it's not, it wasn't a transparent move. It was a business move. And that's all it was. And I talked to, like I said, the senior partner, he knows exactly. His answer was, his answer was, "I'm sorry, I told the board to talk to you." I said, "Really? What did they do?" And all they could say, I said, "Because if you put yourself, and I want each and every, even though you may not, whatever it takes, I'm not here for popularity counts. I'm here to move this village forward." There you go. To make this village a better place for everyone, everyone to live in, not just a few. And apply rules and regulations to every person, every resident here. Not have a backdoor deal, like, "Let's do this on the side. We don't see this one, we see that one." I'm here to make sure that the laws that we have apply to everybody, not just a few. That's my job. And the job for the trustees is to make sure they watch the money and legislation. I'm here to act legislation. But when things happen, yes, I am upset, because I believed in this law firm for seven years. I believed in them, and I had no problem. But to allow that to happen, because whoever, yes, that's hurting, that's very hurtful. And no, I don't like it. So, now, you say you want the law firm to have something to say?
Yes, please.
By all means.
Thank you, Mayor. I passed out a copy of a prepared statement, just so it's not misstated, and everyone can follow along as I read. Mayor, my office was surprised to receive your letter last Friday. Bert Olson called the village and left a message for you.
Excuse me, Mr. McGrath, could you speak up just a little?
Sure. I could barely hear you.
Bert Olson called the village and left a message for you, but received no response from you. Bert also left a voicemail on your cell with no response. Later in the day on Friday, he sent an email, still no response from you. We sent the letter to the entire board to advise the board of your action. Not knowing any specific reasons for your letter, I thought it would be good idea to give a little background on Olson and Stirk's history with the village of Sauk Village. As you know, my office was brought in by former mayor Towers as his third village law firm. From that day forward, our office has been involved with significant projects, litigation, and economic development with the village. For example, we were deeply involved in the water litigation with the Illinois Attorney General and the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency, and settled that matter for a few thousand dollars, and not the tens of thousands of dollars that the state initially demanded. During that crisis, we negotiated with contractors and vendors, village engineers and department heads. We worked on village financing for the installation of temporary, then permanent airstrippers. We also worked with our contacts with the state, and the low-interest loan for those airstrippers in the water crisis was subsequently discharged as a debt to the village. We have coordinated many meetings with state officials regarding tax incentives and development for the logistics center. We have worked with all the village TIF districts, and worked on a number of bond issues for the village. Through the years, we have given sound legal advice as to personal matters, along with negotiating the village's collective bargaining agreements and handling all labor issues. Lastly, we have handled the majority of the village's litigation, which from time to time required your participation, either at deposition or in court. Many times, you have complemented our litigation abilities and the results in court that we had. Recently, I advised you and the board of the status of pending litigation. When you took office as mayor, there were 12 pending lawsuits against the village. As I reported, my office resolved 11 of those cases. These cases included litigation pertaining to the village's water supply contamination, which we settled for less than $50,000 between four separate cases. The Henrietta Turner case, where the trial board awarded her damages and attorney fees for approximately $100,000, our office won on appeal. There were no attorney fees allowed to Ms. Turner or the law firm that represented her. The Lisa Gibbons lawsuit, who demanded hundreds of thousands of dollars and settled for $25,000 on the eve of trial. And a number of civil rights cases, such as the Moore versus Sauk Village case, where the plaintiff demanded $325,000; the Michael versus Sauk Village case, where the plaintiff demanded $625,000; and the James versus Sauk Village case, where the plaintiff demanded over $200,000. All three of those cases were defended by our office, and we resolved or settled all three of those cases for approximately $200,000, covering all three. We have led the defense of the Salisbury matter, and the court granted a motion for summary judgment recently on behalf of the defendants Hanks and Ferment. The village remains a defendant and is represented by another law firm, but I advised you and the board on the strength of the defense of that case. We have kept our fees the same hourly rate as when we were first appointed as village attorney, at $165 per hour. We have always been mindful of the village's legal bills, and as you know, when the village faced financial difficulties through the years, we allowed our legal fees to go unpaid, sometimes for up to six months, to help out the village in extremely difficult times, so the village could pay other bills. As I stated, we have worked through three different administrations as village attorneys, and hope to continue to work with your administration. When you were elected mayor, you advised our office not to attend village board meetings in an effort to cut legal fees. We agreed, and we have had very little involvement with the village over the last two years. During this time, however, you have hired all the law firms to do village work at higher hourly rates. My office issued a FOIA to the village requesting some legal bills, and our FOIA request was not fully answered. I have been informed, Tim Lab's law firm is billing the village at a higher rate, $175 per hour. We won't know how much he has billed the village until our FOIA is answered. Your administration recently retained Barnes &amp; Thornburg, a large international law firm having over 1,000 attorneys to handle a routine FOIA matter. That firm has offered the village a discounted hourly rate of $495 per hour for their associate attorney, and $600 per hour for its partner on a FOIA matter. While not having a village attorney at board meetings or involved with village operations may be sound financial, may be a sound financial reason, the result of not having the village attorney involved with ongoing matters can lead to many things not being done correctly. Just a cursory review of the last two years of agendas, minutes, and ordinances indicate many are improper, and if not illegal, it will have to be redone. I had to issue an amended village audit letter for the last two years, because there is pending litigation that my office was never made aware of. The village's audit is used to establish the village's bond ratings and finances. This oversight could have had a significant impact on the village's finances, including the two current bond issues that are currently being worked on. As far as appointments, there have been a number of improper appointments and removals from village personnel. As far as termination, the former finance director's termination did not comply with state statute. Elect, or just improper responses have been issued. Just a few months ago, the village had to settle a FOIA lawsuit and was required to pay the requester's attorney's fees, costing the village over $3,000. The current FOIA litigation, again, being defended by Barnes &amp; Thornburg, has cost the village $3,000. That is on tonight's warrant, and the complaint hasn't even been answered yet by that law firm. It appears the village zoning code has not been followed over the last two years. Mayor, as you know, elections have consequences. As I stated the other night, I feel like this is a scene from the movie Groundhog Day. What is happening now is what happened years ago, when you were a trustee on the board under Mayor Towers. Back then, you were part of the majority of the board, which gave direction to my office to draft ordinances. Certainly, you remember the ordinance recreated to abolish the village administrator position. Certainly, you remember the ordinance recreated to abolish the chief of police position, position, and the ordinance which installed certain powers over the police department to the fire chief. Certainly, you remember my office appearing in court on multiple matters in opposition to Mayor Towers. This all occurred while you were a member of the majority of the board of trustees. Mayor, we have always strived to advise the elected officials of what they can and cannot do. It is then up to the mayor and the board to either implement those actions or not implement those actions. We are hoping that will be restored as the village attorney for the village of Sauk Village, and look forward to working with all the elected officials to do the good work that the residents expect and desire.
Okay, I appreciate that letter that you wrote, and basically, you did your job that you got paid for, and that's not a problem. The problem, as I stated, was the untransparent way that you handled this last matter. That's why you've been here for all these years, because you did your job. But for this to happen, I cannot go any further and believe...now, if the board would like to replace and put you as legislative council, I have no problem with that. But I cannot sit and then ask questions on someone, a person, that actually did what they did, as I just got to explaining, and put that person as my corporate counsel. I'm sorry. I appreciate, yes, I remember a lot of these different things. Some of them are inaccreditable, I'm not going over there. I'm going over, I'm just looking at the whole picture. The whole picture is, you did not inform me of what was going on. I'm not talking about the board. So, if that's what, if there's a problem, if you don't see a problem with that, then yes, there is a problem. If you don't see a problem with that. But the board would like to retain you, as they have the right to, as legislative council for the legislative duties and actions, I have no problem with that. But as far as corporate counsel, no, sir. I will, any other questions? If not, I'll ask the clerk or roll call.
Can you restate the motion, please, Mr. Mayor?
The motion was to retain Olson and Stirk. Restore Olson and Stirk as the village attorney effective immediately.
Thank you.
It was moved in second. I just asked the clerk to call the roll.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Graham?
No.
Trustee Justice?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Public comment.
I remember when Towers was the mayor, and I'm gonna tell y'all this, when a person is not trustworthy, I don't care what color their heels, they're not trustworthy. Now, the people went against Towers, all the trustees, he got, he sent a letter telling Towers about he was going to represent the trustees, and the trustees were going to bang him up. And your trustees backed him up again. Let me say this to you, if either one of you all get to be mad, you think you're going to be able to trust him? I don't think so.
Judy Cast. It's amazing to hear all the things that you had to say, Mr. Burgess. We get up here week after week after week and complain that there is no transparency with you, that there is favorites played with your administration. We see people who are forced to pay things and other people are not. That's not transparent. We see code enforcement being overlooked for some people, but not others. We've sent FOIA after FOIA after FOIA, begging for some transparency, and you won't give it to us. You hire people, and when we ask about where are they from, what's their background, we get a letter saying no paperwork exists for that. Well, how'd you hire them? You won't tell us anything. You're not transparent. You can't have your roof fixed today without going through hell. You could put stuff up in your yard that looks like garbage, and it's overlooked, but let somebody not cut their grass, and they're getting tickets. And it's been reported and reported and reported. Certain people seem to have a liking and others don't, if they don't agree with you. And we've asked for that transparency, and it's not right. Maybe they didn't tell you about what they were going to do. But did you ever tell, why does a trustee have to FOIA? Because you won't tell them what they're supposed to know. Now, you're demanding to be told what you think you need to know, but you won't give the same courtesy to the others. I think that's called being a hypocrite.
What I would like to clarify here...
I'm sorry.
Frank Williams, 1633-260. What did you say?
Jessica Day.
Frank Williams.
It's against the law for us to ask for your address anymore, so please don't give us your address.
Okay. Now, what I would like to get clarified here, I don't know about no other village but Sauk Village. The mayor cannot hire or buy anybody. You must understand that, people. I don't care how you look at it, he cannot do it. Only thing he can do, appoint. He can make recommendations, but he cannot hire. The trustee do the hire, do the hiring and the finding, that's who do that. Nobody else can do it. He can recommend anything he wants to recommend, but he'd have to bring it to the board, and it have to be with the consent of the board. At least two-thirds of that board have to agree with him. Other than that, he cannot do it. Now, he knows that he's been a trustee for eight or nine years, and he know good and well enough that that's where this village is wrong. I'm not talking about what no other village do. I'm talking about Sauk Village, and I can prove it to you, anytime you get ready to show you, the mayor is there to vote. If three and three, he breaks the tie. That is his job, and that's all he can do. Now, that's the truth.
Pat Couch. All those FOIs that we put in and got back those answers that said, "No documents exist, no documents exist." If you had had whoever do their job and complete those FOIs, there wouldn't have been a lawsuit. And how many times, up here at this podium, for two years, I have asked questions of you and never get an answer? If I get an answer, it might be two words, but you have refused to answer me anytime I get up here and ask you a question. How transparent is that? I put in a FOIA several months ago. I got back a part answer, it wasn't what I was going to say, but I got back a part answer, and I paid $120 for that FOIA, and I only got back part answer. A stack of papers that high were redacted. They weren't anything, they really, it was a joke. But I will be putting in for my refund, because that was unethical, the way it was answered, because it was late. Every single time, I would get back a note, "No documents exist, haven't got time to do it, it's going to take a little while." I paid for that redact, for that paper that was redacted, but if you had had it answered properly, we wouldn't be going through some of the stuff we're here. If you'd been transparent and answered the people's questions when they get up here, we wouldn't be going through some of this. Thank you. Hope Mr. Olson and Stirk are taking notes.
My name is Ted Maris, and I got involved about two years ago, Mr. Burgess, when I came to your office, and I just asked for you to come to the middle. I know there's two opposing sides here, there's got to be a happy medium. And I had faith in you. And I got criticized by the other side, because I took your side, and I said, "You don't know what it's like to be mayor." I gave you 48 hours to give me an option of how we can come together. You failed to do that. You didn't respond to me, you didn't return my calls. Joe Weaselwadi doesn't return my calls. Oh, whatever. The case, my point is, I would not be standing in front of you if we could just... My point is, since I started working in Sauk Village, I have taken 47 houses. I have taken them from vacant and abandoned, broken windows, broken in, drug, drug houses, and I have now all 47 houses occupied with good... I have now all 47 houses occupied with good, upstanding tenants. Guess what? I need an inspection on those houses. Do you know what Tri-County Housing said to me? A word that come out of your mouth? You make sure you fail these guys. He came to my house, and he said, "This is the best house I've seen in all of Sauk Village, but unfortunately, I have to fail you." You know why he failed me? Because I had paint chipping on the outside of the house. And he was told by Mr. Joe, "Make sure there's no paint chipping, make sure it looks cute, it looks pretty." And when he inspected my plumbing, he did this. Yep, you got hot water? Yep, we got cold water? That's good. That's not inspections. We need to go back to the way things work. And for you to tell your buddies that you got in here to do the inspections, is quite frankly bullshit.
My name is Larry Satt, and it's sad to see how divided this system is here at our expense. Now, I heard the lawyer talk about the legations that he handled, and it sounds like he did do a good job, but I didn't hear anything about the cost of these mythical investigations that's ongoing, and what level would that affect the good residents of the village. Regarding some of the complaints that I've heard, I did my own research, and I find that those complaints are true, with the exception that they were going on before you were even mayor. Nobody had a problem with that. Nobody. And this is not about me being racist, but I see it in the room, and you can deny it all you want. We need to work on behalf of the residents of the village and put your personal feelings aside. You didn't come here to get even with the mayor, but it seems like that's what everybody's trying to do. He wants to turn the clock back to his advantage? I don't know if the things he's saying that somebody says is true, that's hearsay. So we can't accept that, and it should be stricken from the record. Stop working on behalf of the people, because it's our money you're wasting.
My name is Stan Zegel. I requested FOIAs in the past from the village. The results have not been satisfactory. I sued the village. The case was settled. I have now filed today, or was it yesterday? Requests, two more FOIA requests. I hope they will be properly answered. No excuses, no fake reasons for trying to delay, because I don't wanna be in the position we were before in the first suit. I requested some very simple things. I can't believe that they would be secret. You know, a copy of the ledger for the sewer fund. Now, come on. There's no reason to try to, you know, find a reason to deny that. I requested a copy of the detailed ledger for the water fund for the past two fiscal years. There's no reason to try to find somebody to find a reason to withhold that. And I certainly hope that you won't. If you would feel better, you know, with the advice from an attorney you trust in order to release that information, you know, so be it. But it is important to, I'm the executive director of the Citizen Participation Institute. We are the ones who keep communities up to date on the ever-changing FOIA law. We publish the only book available that they have to see what the Attorney General's opinions are in latest statutes. You know, we routinely handle FOIAs, and I hope that the village of Sauk Village will deal with the FOIAs that I filed yesterday appropriately and promptly.
Okay, I appreciate those comments. That's your opinion. I only have one thing to say, well, two things to say. And it's very, I really don't know how to say it, but just, I'm not trying to sugarcoat it. If a person came in here today, and I've said this many times before, when I was sitting in that seat down there, and wanted to do business in this village, they would run, not walk, would run out of here and go to the next place going. Until we, not just me, just this board, until we come together for the common good, and I thought, I thought the common good was the betterment of the village. But until we come together on the common good, we will not go any further. I'm surprised that we were able to get the gas and wash that we got. We got other things that was coming up, that are coming out. I hope that someone that's bringing those things is not sitting in this audience tonight. Because if they can't get past this back and forth, why should they do business here in this village, and then go down the street and have less, less?
Complications.
Whatever, yes, complications. It's a shame that I can sit out here, and these board members can sit out here and look at, see the divide. It's almost like you see on television, when you see the Democrats and Republicans clap for each other, one stands, one sits, whatever happens. That's not how you bring a village together. Yes, I know you've been here for years. Yes, you have. A lot of people have been here longer than I have. But you're here. You're here, and you hope that justice is for everyone, not just the privileged few or the ones that end the numbers. So, that being said, and I don't know, I guess he left, Mr. Mayor. Ted Maris, I know you don't, but I just wanna say that, and I'm gonna be a gentleman and not repeat what this man came to my office, said down the podium, but that's in between me and him. But it's a shame that you're standing up here now to say that all the board was being this, this, and this. If you are having deplorable conditions for people to move in, and we find that, you talk any excuse you want to, why should a person pay rent and live like that with mold, mildew, not running water, paint, whatever it may be? You don't have that in your house. So why is it okay for that person to do that? First of all, sir, first of all, I'm not gonna, I don't, I don't have, blurting out is the worst that you can do with me. I gave everybody a chance to stand at that podium. I gave you a chance to stand at that podium. I gave you a chance to come to the podium, sir. All you had to do was come up there and express your feelings. But, not now, but you had a chance. But now you're being disrespectful. Yes, you are, sir, but I gave you a chance. I'll add some motion to adjourn.
Some move?
Moved by Trustee Williams, seconded by Trustee Brewer. All in favor? Five minutes will start the board meeting.